Meeting at 7:05. We apologize for being a few minutes late. We were in negotiations relative to contract negotiations and executive session. Bring these glasses out. I need them now, I'm sorry. Here we are, right? Transmitting of the Treasury want number forty-eight, forty-eight A, forty-nine, and forty-nine A. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman O'Connell. Is there a second? Second by Selectman Samaglia. Are those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Our appointment at seven o'clock to seven oh five. Mr. Gleason here? I see him in the audience. Verizon, Public Air and Water Request of Verizon New England and Redding Municipal Light Department to remove one pole and place one pole on King Street. Good evening, Mr. Gleason.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Joseph Gleason. I'm a right-of-way agent with Verizon New England. The office will locate at twenty Shattuck Road in Andover. The petition before the Board this evening is a fairly simple one. Verizon and RMLD requesting permission to relocate one existing pole, ninety-five of a fourteen, located on King Street approximately, actually, I don't have the distance from Kilby Street. And by the way, we apologize, the plan, the cross street there is actually Kilby Street, not Kirby Street. But Pole fourteen sits southerly of the Kilby Street intersection, and what they'd like to do is place that pole approximately seventeen feet southerly of its existing position. The reason for this is there's a new home going in at that location, and this pole move will accommodate the developer of that lot. I don't know exactly why the pole needs to be moved, but if I had to speculate, it's probably because that's where the driveway is going to go. So, thank you.
Very good. Any questions from the, before I go to any, I know it's a poll or Karen, and before I go to the audience, unless we may go there first. Is there any abudders in the audience that would like to make comment relative to this proposal here before the Board tonight? Okay, thank you. Jeff, we got, it's been a while, recommendations from the town. This is basically before the Board of Selectmen and--
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's before the Board. If there's any questions, comments, or motion, I'd entertain that right now.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, use the shampoo?
I have a very brief question. I hope it's brief, anyway. You're proposing to put a brand-new pole and move the services that are on the old pole to the new one. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we're not going to double-pole anything? You know what I mean, when I say double-pole, like marry the two poles together?
The answer to your question would be no, as far as putting two poles next to one another. I will readily acknowledge that, once the new pole goes in, you will actually have those two poles there while the transfer work continues. So, given that it's a seventeen-foot gap, some might suggest it's not a double-pole, some might suggest it's a double-pole. I think the question is, is, you know, will we be able to effectuate those transfers quickly and remove that dead wood? I would hope so, given that this is to accommodate the developer at that location, and I'm sure that if the abudders aren't out there, the developer will be screaming bloody heck about getting those facilities moved and the dead wood out of there. So, I would say, in a technical sense, yes, you're going to have a double-pole there, but it will only be for a short period of time.
Until the project is done.
Yeah, knock on wood.
Yeah, that's, not to belabor the point, and not related to this request. It's the double-pole issue, I know, is a hot issue regionally, as well as throughout the Commonwealth. And while it's not a humongous problem here in Wilmington, it does exist, and frankly, I find them a little offensive to look at. And I'm not sure about the effectiveness or the, if there's anything technical that is either pro or con about them, but sometimes seeing them either double-poled, or where you have the old pole that's been sort of cantilevered off of the new pole.
Yes.
I don't know. I just, I would prefer, in a perfect world, if we could just put all new poles and move the wires up against the new poles, but--
In response, Mr. Chairman, I will tell you that, in all circumstances of this nature, I would encourage the Board and/or the administration of the town to contact Verizon. I would probably start with our Public Relations Department. Stan Yusovich, some of you may know him, he's former mayor of Salem, and Stan is sort of the point man on a lot of our double-pole issues in some of the towns that have problems with this. So, you could start with engineering, but as, again, things are, we used to be in Drakot, things were a little bit different. We were in Drakot. We've been, our positions have been consolidated, moved into Andover, where we've become sort of a small piece of a much bigger puzzle there. And it used to be that engineering would take the lead a lot on the double-pole issues. I'm seeing now that Public Relations now is taking the lead on this. So, again, I would encourage the town, town leaders, administration, contact Public Relations, contact Mr. Yusovich, and let him know, because he has, when I come here, I don't have remedial authority. He does.
I see.
And he can, you know, interface with the town, and he can muster the appropriate staff to get these double poles remediated, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that information.
I see the town manager dotted that individual's name, so I'm sure that the manager will be making that call in the morning time. Anybody else? Also, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Gleason. Couple meetings ago, you were in here, and I did ask you for the list for the double poles, and we did get them. So, it's probably a fairly recent list of the double poles.
Well, I should apologize, because I should have had the list with me this evening, and I--
You did send it a couple months ago, maybe, but--
Well, every time I come to a double-pole, I should have one, at least with me, to give to the Board, and I apologize. But I will endeavor to have our clerks send town administrator one tomorrow, updated one, and show you where we're at. Again, I always say, again, I don't want to belabor the point, but I always say that, when you look at the double-pole report, please look at it with a bit of a jaundiced eye, because it's kind of a document in flux. It changes all the time. So, it's fairly accurate. It's never a hundred percent accurate, but it gives you sort of a good, broad overview.
Very good. Any other, all set? Judy, all set? Is there a motion relative to the issue before us?
I'd like to make that motion as presented, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Selectman O'Connell, second by Selectman Samaglia. Are those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
I'm going to stay, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, and one extension, Selectman Newhouse. Thank you. I didn't see that, Michael. Thank you. Have a good night, Mr. Gleason. Thank you. Take care. Our next appointment, Shelley Newhouse, Health Director, relative to cancer awareness efforts. Director Newhouse, come on up. Good evening.
I apologize. I have a little bit of laryngitis. For those of you that don't know or haven't met, this is Tracy Mello, our new public health nurse. She's been here for a few months now. Welcome addition to the Board of Health. It's been excellent. Tracy acquired a sun safety grant with the Mass Department of Public Health just recently, which we're going to promote this summer regarding skin cancer and just basic sun safety. Now, I'll let Tracy explain a little bit about what we're going to do with the grant money that we received.
Super.
Our initial population that we're going to educate on sun safety or melanoma is six-to-twelve-year-olds. And we've already disseminated information throughout the elementary schools and in poster form. And we're going to educate, we're actually working with the Recreation Department to educate the camp counselors to teach the kids about melanoma and sun safety. We are also going to work with the Police Department on Beach Day. Then we're going to do some education there. We have giveaways, like Badger sunscreen. Give us a lot of sunscreen to give away at the beach. We have hats, we have sunglasses. We just, we have a lot to offer free to our community, so.
We're going to go into the CARES program during the summer and do some activities with the kids on, you know, how long they should be in the sun for, sunscreen, making sure they wear sunscreen, and just promote skin cancer awareness. But the ending being, Police Beach Day will kind of be the end of the whole grant. We did it last year, and we have, you know, it's a nice day where we can give out sunscreen and do raffle prizes, and the police are there to help out, and it works well.
Hopefully, it'll be the end of pollen season.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, Mrs. Samaglia?
Mr. Chairman, I thank you for this effort in applying for the grant. Correct me if I'm wrong, is skin cancer, melanoma, is one of the most deadliest, and also one of the most easiest to detect?
Absolutely. You've done your reading.
Yeah, well, my mother passed of melanoma, so I know a little bit about it. But, again, I just appreciate you taking the effort to get the grant and do what you're doing, and get to the young kids.
Any information that anyone needs, we have available down at the nurse's office. And out front of the nurse's office, we have a poster board that we put, you know, different events that are happening throughout the year. And right now, we'll have skin cancer, how to detect, changes in different moles that you may have, or different signs of skin cancer.
Thank you.
The comment that I'd add is that certainly educating all generations of Wilmington residents makes sense. But one of the things I've noticed is, when you educate the young kids, that's when things really kind of take off. I mean, from something like this to recycling, you know, once the kids get it, mom and dad get it, whether they're listening or not. So, it's a great target audience that you have.
If the comments have already been said, I wanted to personally welcome you to that new position here. Welcome, and I hope you enjoy it. And also, thank you to both of you for your efforts. I think Selectman Newhouse said it best with the early intervention. I can tell you, as a child, I thought it was fashionable to have a tan, and I don't think I realized at that young age just what sun exposure can do to anyone. So, I really appreciate the early intervention, and I look forward to hearing about it. And I have young family members in the town that hopefully will learn a lot as to what this is about, and I wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, I was just, I was going to say a similar thing. Welcome. Nice to meet you. And thank you for doing all the efforts at these events, but also thank you for being here tonight to make it visible, hopefully, to the community that's watching, and hopefully the press will write about it as well, because, you know, you get your small, captured audience at some of the events that they'll see or hear the message, but hopefully, we can broadcast that same message out as well. And, yeah, when we were kids, or when I was a kid, it was, we got complacent. And so, that complacency about sun, and, no, I got a sunburn, it hurts. You don't really think about the damage you're doing, you just think the fact that it hurts. But that's my generation. So, you know, if we can really articulate into the younger generation the dangers, that there's, it's more than just a little bit of pain for a few days. It's, you know, a long-term life of danger there. So, I think it's wonderful to continue to do that work. I'm glad you're doing it, and thank you again.
I think it's all been said, but just on a personal note, it's really good to see that these discussions take place. And Shelley, I hear a lot of positive things coming from your office. You're doing a great job as the Director, you know, when you're bringing people here for autism, and, you know, as Mr. Newell stated, you know, it's really good to see that, all this information, people, and it really means a lot. And I'm in the public business, and I hear people all the time talking about it, and the few people that do watch it, it hits home. And I appreciate your effort, and I'd like to meet you, and congratulations, and I look for a nice, healthy relationship. Thank you. Have a nice night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, turn it over to Jeff. Jeff, Communications, please.
Okay. The first item on under Communications is correspondence from the Mass DOT. This is with respect to the funding for Chapter Ninety. It's actually, the correspondence is from Richard Davy, who is the Director from the Mass DOT. He indicates that the, while the Governor had an ambitious plan to seek three-hundred million dollars a year over the next ten years to upgrade the infrastructure, including roads, the Legislature, House, and Senate proposed a one-year authorization, which is pending the outcome of the current debate. But the money, if approved, would grant the town of Wilmington five-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars in Chapter Ninety money. As you know, Chapter Ninety money is critical to cities and towns, including Wilmington, because it allows us to make repairs, and, in some cases, substantial replacement of sections of roadway throughout town. So, we are certainly looking forward to a finalization on Chapter Ninety money. Next, on the, under Correspondence, we have memorandum from Jamie McGoldy. He is the Assistant Public Works Superintendent. He had attended a session a short time ago about, it was offered by the Mass DEP, about electric vehicle incentive program, which this grant, the deadline is actually June thirtieth. They offer five-thousand-dollar grants towards the purchase of up to five plug-in hybrid vehicles, up to seventy-five-hundred dollars towards the purchase of five full electric vehicles, and then they offer up to fifteen-thousand towards the purchase and installation of a public Level Two charging station. As I mentioned, the grant deadline is the thirtieth. Communities have one year from the date of the award of the grant to purchase a vehicle. If municipality, for whatever reason, is unable to come up with the funds to purchase such a vehicle, then the grant would be forfeited at no penalty to the city or town. The purchase, the cost to purchase a fully-electric or hybrid vehicle on the state contract ranges from thirty to thirty-eight thousand dollars versus nineteen thousand, which is the going rate for an equivalent vehicle that is gas-powered. So, this program is available, and the next memo is to the Board of Selectmen from me, and this describes our response. At this point, based upon the information that Jamie has provided, I am not proposing that we participate in this program. In part of the, there are a number of different reasons why I'm suggesting we hold off at this time. First of all, to purchase a hybrid plug-in vehicle, the cost is significantly more than the cost to purchase a gas-powered vehicle. It's estimated that it would take about twenty-two years for us to, for that hybrid plug-in vehicle to pay for itself, essentially. So, that's not likely to happen, given that most of the vehicles turn over well before that timeframe. Also, I think it's important for us to understand the long-term experience that other communities have had with these plug-in electric vehicles, their reliability, safety, maintenance costs, how frequently the batteries need to be recharged. Another factor that we need to look at is the ease of recharging the vehicles, which include the frequency of being recharged, the amount of time that the vehicle has to be out of service to be recharged, and also just the access to recharging stations. These recharging stations are popping up in some of the more urban areas. We're not aware of areas of these recharging stations in our areas. So, as much as the vehicles are predominantly used locally, they are taken out of town periodically for conferences or meetings, and at this point, it's just not clear how accessible these recharging stations would be. And then also, I think we should consider alternatives to the plug-in type of vehicles. Certainly, one alternative would be the gas-electric hybrid vehicle, which doesn't require the plug-in station. Those vehicles get considerably higher gas mileage than the vehicles we currently have. And also, I think the practice, as you know, has been that we recycle, if you will, the Crown Victorias, and those, once they've done their duty, so to speak, and the Police Department have historically been passed out to, or serviced out to other departments, those vehicles average about twelve or thirteen miles to a gallon. Even purchasing newer, smaller vehicles for some of the departments that don't need the high-powered police cruisers will generate savings, because those, these other vehicles would be more fuel-efficient. So, at this point, I'm suggesting we hold off on that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, on that--
Sure, go ahead.
--those set of memos. I was excited when I saw this come across our desk a few weeks ago, just because I, you know, I thought it was worthwhile, and I still do think it's worthwhile. And Jeff always has been bullish on researching what's available out there to save the planet as much as we can, or minimize our carbon footprint. So, frankly, I was a little disappointed that the numbers came back the way that they did, that the cost of these vehicles, and I haven't done any personal research on them, but I will just simply say that it's, it is regrettable that it would take twenty-two years for us to get a payback on this investment. Yes, we would potentially be reducing our carbon footprint, and that in and of itself would be admirable, but we're also not in the business of costing more dollars to the taxpayers of Wilmington. So, I certainly concur that it's not a good move for us at this time. That being said, if there are, as we go forward, opportunities for us as a community to look at the hybrid vehicles or other ways of minimizing fuel consumption, while at the same time trying to keep our costs to the taxpayers down, I think we should, and I'm sure we will, continue to look for those opportunities. So, thank you, Jeff, for bringing this to our attention, and for having Jamie update us on the program. I wish it was better results, and that the vehicles were more in line with traditional vehicles, and maybe in our lifetime, we'll see that, but I just don't think we're there yet now. So, again, thank you for that information.
I have a memo to the Board regarding honoring the hockey team. As you know, the Wilmington Hockey, Wilmington High School Boys Hockey Team has accomplished a remarkable feat by skating to two consecutive Division Two hockey championships. This is the first time that a Wilmington High School team has earned this distinction since the girls' softball team won back-to-back championships in nineteen ninety-three and nineteen ninety-four. It is only fitting that the boys' hockey team receive similar recognition. To that end, a sign has been prepared that will be installed next to the W on the Wilmington, on Middlesex Avenue, across from the Town Common. The sign is planned to be installed by Public Works personnel this week. This sign was presented during the hockey team's banquet at the Knights of Columbus back on June fifth. I see we have a few of the hockey players here with us tonight. Brian Pickett, Cam Owens, and Drew Foley, two, I guess, represent the team. So, I just wanted to show the Board, and also those who may be watching us this evening, the sign, and again, just acknowledge the incredible effort that this team has put together both this year and last year. Cool. So, this is, this is a sign.
Very nice.
So, we'll have it up in time for the July fourth festivities.
Jeff, looks like you're kind of struggling with that.
It's a good-sized sign. You don't realize how big these signs are, you know, when you're driving by them, but--
So, how would we actually retrofit that, to put two thousand fourteen?
Yeah.
No.
Just thinking a couple of years.
We'll have to buy them on sign.
Just thinking, a couple of years, we might be seeing you playing in the Bruins, you know? Hey, it's always that great possibility, you know?
That's great.
Any--
It looks great, and I don't want to review everything that we all said when the entire hockey team was present, but thank you to you gentlemen for being here this evening, for that, kind of the public unveiling, if you will. And, again, congratulations, and extend that to your teammates, please.
Yeah, quite a feat. I agree. Congratulations.
I think everybody echoes that, and you make the town proud. And, like Judy said, hey, maybe we can change that to two thousand fourteen, where you guys are going. I think it's going to happen.
Congratulations.
Make sure you get your photos taken. As soon as it's up, get the whole team out in front of it. That's great. Good for you guys.
And we'll be willing to put the blond wig on again next time. Maybe we'll do a little bit something different. We'll surprise you. You do something, we'll do a little bit, little bit different. How's that, okay? Here you go. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
The next item of correspondence is just reporting on a, essentially, an email exchange came to my attention. It was also directed to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Ernie Boddy sent an email expressing some concern about the number of stops that the Lowell Regional Transit Authority buses are making in Wilmington, and he believes that, in some instances, they're creating unsafe conditions. I responded to his email and suggested that the LRTA, first of all, they have certain bus stops that are set along Route Thirty-Eight. If you may recall, that they service Route Thirty-Eight from the Tewksbury, Wilmington-Tewksbury Line, down to the MBTA Station at sixty-two and Thirty-Eight, and then they head back. In addition to these designated stops, they also will pick up pedestrians who perhaps are in between those locations, if they signal that they're looking for a ride. I basically suggested to Mr. Boddy that I can appreciate his concern. Obviously, when the buses stop, it, in some cases, traffic stops as well. But in many respects, I think it's very similar to what happens during the school year, when the buses are, school buses are cycling around town, picking up and dropping off students. So, you know, given the fact that we have such limited regional bus transit, I really hate to discourage that kind of option for people who don't have other means to get from point A to point B.
I'm in agreement with you. I think that's a well said.
Okay.
Have you heard this concern from anybody else? It's the first observation that I've heard about that pedestrian flag-down kind of thing. If there was a rampant problem, maybe we want to look into it, but is this one of few, or the only, observation that you've had?
I have not had other calls like this, no. The Board has correspondence inviting you to the installation of officers at the Friendship Lodge Saturday, June twenty-second, six p.m., Friendship Lodge, Thirty-two Church Street, and it's RSVP by June fifteenth. We have a memorandum from Carol Hamilton, Director of Planning and Conservation. Please request the Board of Selectmen authorize the sale of town land. Assessor's Map eighty, parcel forty-two B, as voted at the May four, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting. Following the authorization, I will prepare a request for proposals to initiate the bidding process. The starting bid amount, as established by the assessor, is thirteen thousand, seven-hundred dollars. You may recall, at the town meeting, there were several parcels that were requested to be deemed surplus. This was the one, the only one that was deemed surplus. And so, the process at this point is for the Board to take a vote, authorizing us to proceed with the sale. And then, from there, as Carol notes here, she will prepare a request for proposal. It's publicly noticed, and individuals will have a date and time certain by which to submit a price to purchase the property.
Mr. Chairman, through you, if I could just confirm with the manager that if the Board votes to authorize the RFPs, to authorize the sale, I presume there'll be language in there that will protect us in the unlikely event that the high bidder, or the, you know, whichever proposal comes in, that's, if there were one that were inconsistent with the proposed use that was presented to town meeting, would still have the ability not to buy into that sale, right? So, if you, I just wanted to--
Yes.
I know historically, that's happened. It hasn't happened in a very long time, so I just wanted to make sure we had that on the record.
Yes, the, first of all, the bids have to come in at least at the thirteen-seven in order to qualify. The parcel is a very small piece of property. It's really, has very limited value. I presume it would only be valuable to the abudders to the property.
Okay. With that understanding, I'd move to authorize the sale of the land described by the town manager.
Second. Is there a second? Motion made by Selectman Newhouse, second by Selectman Samaglia. Are those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Then we have a letter to the Board. This reads as follows. "I am writing you for approval of street closure for our annual Jacob Street block party. We would like to block off Jacob Street at both Cunningham Street and Faulkner Street for the duration of the party. It will be on Saturday, June 22nd, from 2:00 PM until 8:00 PM. We have done this for the past five years without any issues. In the past, the DPW has dropped off roadblocks for us to use and this has worked out very well. I will inform both police and fire departments of this day before or morning of. If there are any other issues I need to deal with, please let me know. Kristen Stokes."
And once again, I'm sure the police and the DPW and your office is all aware and if there's any question, comments, or motion relative to the request?
Move to grant the request?
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Newhouse, seconded by Selectman O'Connell. Are those in favor? Unanimous.
Okay, the...
Any public comments?
Can I add two cents?
Mr. Chairman, to the...
Go ahead, what?
I'd like to add two cents to the electric car discussion. Just one minute. Two cents to the electric car discussion, if I could?
Briefly.
Thank you. George Linganfelter, Love and Coffee Street. I'm glad that the town manager decided not to participate in that program. The future of that energy-efficient vehicle is liquid propane. If you wait four or five years, the technology's gonna be the liquid propane with the fracking and domestic energy production, stable prices. So keep your eyes and ears open for the liquid propane. They're already switching over, a lot of commercial diesel truck transportation companies are switching, UPS is switching. And if you, just as a comment on that subject, keep your ears and eyes and ears open when something crosses your desk, talks about liquid propane, that's the future of that, rather than electric vehicles. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing there's no other public comments. Any new business or committee reports? Settle down here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on two different occasions, the Board has been provided a copy of correspondence from Mr. George Linganfelter, addressed to the Director of Capital Planning for MSBA. The first letter was dated February 28th and was 20 pages plus tens of pages of attachments. The town responded to that in April of this past year and addressed the items that were raised. And then Mr. Linganfelter's latest salvo that was dated May 9th, apparently was 47 pages of narrative in response to that. And I just took personal privilege with one of the items in here. On page 32 of 47, Mr. Linganfelter indicates that at one point in time, Chairman Newhouse responded with a three-page rant, also dated June 8, 2012. I just take umbrage with the fact that, you know, a correspondence that's three pages is characterized as a rant when there's 20 plus another 47 pages directed to MSBA, taking issue with information and votes and, I mean, you name it, it's in there. But I thought if anybody's work product is to be characterized as a rant, I'd say that Mr. Linganfelter's two correspondence, they embody that term. So I just wanted to make that comment publicly.
All right, thank you. That's the Newhouse. Any other?
I'm good.
Anybody else?
Yes. And I just wanted to report for the community that our last Yentile meeting, we had a thorough discussion as a committee regarding generating a request for proposal out to the general public. And Mr. Hull and Kendra Ammaral will be working together as the town leadership team to finalize that RFP to go out for the design service RFP that was discussed at the last town meeting, where there was an appropriation for $50,000 that the residents of Wilmington saw fit to approve that day. And we look forward to sending that out and also that will be, at this point, on the central registry as well. And I don't expect that we will have any major updates until after the July-August timeframe. And our next meeting is to be determined.
Thank you.
So we're staying the course.
Judy, you're doing a good job. I hear a lot of positive buzz about there and people are really excited about developing that property. And we need to look at multiple uses and what's best for the town.
The committee's done a great job and a very enthusiastic group of...
Very positive buzz out there. I'm hearing it all the time.
Town personnel and a lot of volunteers that are very excited about this.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Just briefly, you know, I was, I had the opportunity yesterday to be at Beverly High School and it's a new facility. And it was rather impressive. And I was there as part of a sport, sports team or sports event that was going on there with one of my children. So I was there with a number of other residents of Wilmington who were there for the same reason. And we were all sort of universally admiring the grounds and the facilities and the building. The building structure is similar to what we've seen in terms of the images of what will be the new Wilmington High School, so we could kind of get a sense of the reality of what we're, in the construction of now. It was a turf grass field that they were playing on and it was just, it was very exciting to be there and see materially what we will be achieving and what we're working on over the course of the next two years. So it was just, for me, it was, it reinvigorated me and it re-excited me about this construction process that's going on over at the high school. So if anyone feels so inclined to drive up to Beverly and look at their high school, it's a pretty impressive-looking facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, important dates.
Next important date coming up is June 14th, Flag Retirement Ceremony at the Minuteman Headquarters. Also, on June 14th and carrying on into June 15th, the Wilmington Relay for Life over at the Shawshank Tech. They'll begin Friday afternoon, continue through Friday evening, and then close out the ceremony Saturday morning. June 16th is the Farmers Market, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:30 AM to 1:30 PM. The June 22nd and 23rd, the Council for the Arts 33rd Annual Art Exhibition. Also on June 23rd is the Farmers Market again at the Town Common Parking Lot from 10:30 AM to 1:30 PM. Next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is on June 24th, here in Room 9, 7:00 PM. Then the July 4th festivities start on July 2nd and continue on through July 6th down at the Town Common. July 4th is the Family Day and Family Day Fireworks at the Town Common. And then July 6th is the spectacular fireworks at the Town Common.
Being there's no other businesses, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion made by Selectman, Selectman O'Connell, seconded by Selectman Samarglia. Are those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you and...
Good night.
Good night.